Good afternoon, everyone. I am Kate Ford. I'm the board president and at 2:03 PM on August 5th, 2021, I'm calling to order this special meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board. Ms. Sims-Moten is joining us remotely. And now for information about interpretation in this meeting.
Thank you, Board President Ford. I will give this announcement in both English and Spanish. Muy buenas tardes. Vamos a tener interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted desea escuchar la reunión en español, nada más elija su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla, a la derecha, en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación". Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "Español". Si está usando su iPad o su teléfono, localize el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas", elija "Español" y "Finalizar". Si está en inglés, dice "Done". Recuerde, cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor, hable con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Gracias. Hello. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or a desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "Interpretation". Please click on the globe now and select "English". If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation", then select "English" and click "Done". Thank you. We may now begin.
Thank you. We'll begin with Dr. Maldonado. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Please stand, please flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As those of you who are in attendance now know, we are here today for a special board meeting. There's no closed session today, and there are no other agenda items for reports, approval, or public comments. We've scheduled this special board meeting because of the urgency of considering action to further ensure the safety of our staff and students by discussing and taking action on a proposed board resolution which authorizes COVID-19 immunization or testing requirements. We've received numerous emails from members of the public, both in favor of and against the resolution, and I'm really grateful for the input and the perspectives that have been shared with us in order to help us make the decision. If this resolution passes, I'm also really gratified that we received numerous suggestions on the best ways to communicate and create the protocols for implementation. This afternoon, I'm just going to begin by introducing the resolution. The entire board will read the resolution aloud, and we will follow with public comments, and then board comments and questions leading up to the vote. Due to the number of public comments today, we are limiting each comment to two minutes each, and the speakers were informed of this earlier today. Clearly, this is a very serious, complicated, and emotional issue, and I implore the board members and speakers from the public to be respectful in sharing perspectives and suggestions. As is the case with resolutions, there are a number of introductory statements that include data which supports the resolution, national, state, and local data about COVID-19 infections and deaths. It also includes changes to state law regarding distance learning, vaccination safety, the dangers of the Delta variant, the importance of in-person school, and the board's determination to ensure that all students and staff are protected in the 2021-22 school year. The resolution defines our situation as a health emergency and specifies the mandate for vaccinations and/or testing effective immediately. So before we move to public comments, I've asked board members to share in the reading of the resolution.
Thank you, President Ford. This is the resolution number 2021-2205, Resolution of the Board of Education of the Santa Barbara Unified School District authorizing COVID-19 immunization requirements. Whereas Santa Barbara County, along with the rest of California and the United States, is in the midst of a worldwide COVID-19 pandemic that has resulted in 600,000 US deaths to date. At least one in 12 people who live in Santa Barbara County have been infected, and at least one in 952 people have died in our county. Whereas, students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning to full in-person instruction in the fall of 2021 is the number-one priority. And whereas the state of California has eliminated distance learning programs and adopted AB-130 independent study as an alternative program of study to students who are unable to attend in-person instructions. And...
Whereas, the paramount responsibility of the governing board of the Santa Barbara Unified School District is to provide for the health and safety of its students, staff, students and staff, and whereas, a surge of COVID-19 infections has recently occurred, including in Santa Barbara County, largely resulting from the Delta variant, also known as B.1.672, a highly transmittable, transmissible virus that impacts young and old alike. And whereas, over 90% of COVID-19 infections are currently occurring in individuals who have not been vaccinated against COVID-19.
And whereas, the overwhelming scientific evidence has established that the now emergency-use authorization-approved COVID-19 vaccines are safe and effective and have been authorized for use by the Federal Drug Administration and recommended by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention for all, except in case of children under 12 years old and certain others. And whereas, the board has a responsibility to prevent the outbreak and spread of COVID-19 infections at Santa Barbara Unified School District sites. And whereas, COVID-19 vaccination requirements have been legally upheld in recent cases in which there have been challenges.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the Santa Barbara Unified School District finds and orders that there exists a health emergency that requires action to safeguard students and staff against risk of infection, illness, hospitalization, and death from COVID-19. Upon resumption of on-campus instruction, beginning with the fall of 2021 semester, all certified and classified, certificated and classified staff will be required to be vaccinated or participate in regular COVID screening testing. All SBUSD staff are required to provide proof of vaccination or undergo testing a minimum of one week, once a week, to show they are not infected by COVID-19. Unvaccinated staff should obtain vaccinations prior to the start of the school year, August 17, 2021. It is also recommended that families and students aged 12 and over be vaccinated prior to the start of the school year. Number five, Santa Barbara Unified, unvaccinated students will be regularly tested to prevent the spread of COVID-19, especially among asymptomatic people. The testing protocols should be adaptable to the conditions in our community and to the appropriate age group needs. Number six, Santa Barbara Unified will continue to work in partnership with the city and county in order to control the spread of COVID-19, and especially the Delta variant, in Santa Barbara, and encourages city and county leadership to pass similar requirements for all government staff.
Number seven, Santa Barbara Unified School District Administration is directed to promptly develop written procedures for the implementation of this resolution and take all actions necessary to carry out these requirements and to make provision for religious and medical exceptions or deferrals. Number eight, in addition to COVID-19 vaccinations, all staff and members of the public and others coming onto a Santa Barbara Unified School District site shall use face coverings in indoor settings while among others, except while eating or drinking. Number nine, the board hereby delegates to the superintendent the authority to implement and modify these requirements, including based upon changing conditions, and to maintain conformance with the requirements of the Santa Barbara County Health Department and other applicable authorities.
Thank you. That is the proposed resolution. And with that, are there any further introductory comments from Dr. Maldonado or any of your staff?
Not at this time. Thank you, Board President Ford.
Thank you. Then we will continue with our public comments, as I said, two minutes each. So please go ahead, Ms. Trujillo.
Thank you, President Ford. We have 44 public comments on this item, and I will name five people at a time so they can be ready to speak. I will start naming the first five. Justin Shores, Jamie Davin, Danny Blunt, Thomas Becker, Kristi Lozano. And I will start with Justin Shores.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say, I know this is a tough decision. It's unfortunately going to split people into two groups. And so, right away, people are going to have to decide whether or not they're going to come back to work or come to school in the next couple of weeks. It's going to be life-changing for a lot of people because these people have made a decision, an informed decision. You know, these are your community members here, their doctors, their lawyers, their parents. You know, these are all people that have looked at the risks and made a decision. And you guys are, now you're requiring them to have a vaccine that is still not tested. As much as you think it's safe and effective, we don't have the test yet. We don't know. So can we slow down? We also know there's treatments for this. Right now, there's treatments that are approved from the FDA. We don't have to force one singular solution. So we, yes, COVID is real. Yes, vaccines help. But do you have to force it on all of your staff, all of your students? Does this have to happen? I mean, the people that are not, you know, all the medical professionals and teachers and first responders who haven't taken it, based on a decision, based on their life choice, that's an independent choice that they should be able to make. No, you spend millions on it to convince us and then resort to force. This is forcing vaccines on people that let us at least have the test first, guys. You say "safe and effective", but it's been seven months. What's, you know, we need to see, what about all the little girls who haven't had babies yet? What do we know about that? Think about their future, the baby's future. What is going to happen to them? Can we get a test on that before we force our young women to have this vaccine?
Time, thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Davin.
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Jamie Davin. I have a child in the Santa Barbara School District. I am very concerned about the proposal to test all unvaccinated students. My daughter is five and entering kindergarten, and this will be her very first school experience. If you know five-year-olds, it can sometimes be very difficult to get them to do what you want them to do, especially if they're feeling scared or uncomfortable. Lots of children can feel this way, especially in a new environment and without their mom or dad. What will happen if the child refuses to take the test? What if they are screaming "no" and trying to get away? Is someone going to physically hold them down and force test them? Or do they get sent home from school, making them feel like a bad kid and also depriving them of learning? This is a scenario I worry about, not only for my own daughter, but specifically for kids with sensory processing disorders. I cannot imagine how this is going to be done without traumatizing some kids. And I know you say you're following the shots called by the Public Health Department. So I went ahead and contacted our health department and requested data that they're using to make the statements that justify another mask mandate and all of the mandates that the school systems are putting in place. I requested the data set for the months of June through July 2021 for COVID patients admitted to Cottage Hospital. Did COVID patients contract it from an unvaccinated person? What were the outcomes for all of these patients, vaccinated or unvaccinated? What are the testing requirements for the vaccinated and unvaccinated? What was the age demographics and the underlying health conditions? What was the average length of stay and treatment protocols? Is the death rate following the curve of case rate? And they responded back to me, "The county of Santa Barbara has reviewed its files and has determined that there are no documents to fulfill your request." So please explain how you can make these mandates without any actual data to support them. The public deserves to have access to such information because it's literally affecting our lives in drastic ways. I'm done just taking other people's word for it. I would like to see that data so that I can see how these mandates are justified. I'm not going to subject my child to frequent testing at five-year-old. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Danny Blunt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm an immigrant, single mother of three children. I am now facing the possibility of my kids not going to school because of medical choice I make for them. I believe that every kid has the right to go to school without being coerced to a medical treatment. My daughter has extreme anxiety. Using masks was already hard for her. And I believe if she has to go through invasive, uncomfortable, unreliable tests every week, school would be the last place she would want to be. She already went from being an A-plus student to failing during the pandemic. Now she'll probably become a high school dropout. Is that really fair? Before a test coerces my kids to get vaccinated, I would like to see written document and peer-reviewed scientific evidence that this virus was isolated. COVID-19 virus never isolated, neither Delta variant. I would like to remind you that coercion is not consent. And these mandates are also violation of Nuremberg Code, AMA Medical Ethics, Basic Human Rights, and is violation of the law to force a medical procedure into somebody without their informed consent. I know a lot of laws are being broken right now, and I do need to follow them. I do believe you are voted by us to be in this board, to do what is best for our kids. I just told my son that he may not go to school if he is forced to test or take the shot. And he had a fit, asking to be with his friends. If you really worry about our kids' health, how about you do some research on the increase of suicide with the teenagers during these past years? I'm sure it wasn't that more than the kids who died of COVID, healthy kids. Is the lack of normal school activities one of the reasons that kids got depressed? Who will be held accountable for all the damage that are being done to these children? Being forced to do a faulty test, which even CDC admitted that the is not informed consent, is coercion.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Becker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple of scientific facts. Vaccinated persons can transmit the virus at the same infection loads as unvaccinated persons, according to the CDC. During the week of July 25th to July 30th, 22% of new COVID cases in Santa Barbara County were vaccinated persons. Between June 25th and July 25th, the rate of COVID infections in vaccinated persons increased by 1,800%. Now, the LA Unified School District has adopted weekly testing for all employees, whether they're vaccinated or not. That's something that you might want to consider because vaccinated people can transmit this deadly virus as easily as unvaccinated people, and you folks know that. You have the information. Now, a couple of things. One, the lady that talked about the kids being tied down to a table with something shoved up their nose, you really want to do that to those children? Are you really that sadistic? And number two, there was a lady that talked about that she sent questionnaires into the county health department and got no response. Well, I did the same thing. I even emailed you the questions I sent to them. I got no response at all. And you know what? If you're going to inflict this on people and on children, don't you think the parents have a right to have their scientific health questions answered thoroughly, professionally, and honestly? Honestly, you should do that. This is a, just the idea of you tying down a child to a chair and shoving something up a kid's nose and terrifying them. You should be ashamed of yourselves even suggesting that. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristi Lozano.
Good afternoon, board. I'm a school teacher for the Santa Barbara School District. And if I have to be persuaded and reminded and pressured and lied to and incentivized and coerced and bullied and socially shamed and guilt-tripped and threatened and punished and criminalized, if all of this is considered necessary to gain my compliance, then I'm absolutely certain that what is being promoted is not in my best interest. You guys are a school board. We are a school. We are not a health board. It is not our duty to figure out what is going on in this country and why we're being misinformed. It is our duty to focus on our children's education and not on our vaccine status. As one lady already mentioned, it is against the Nuremberg Code to mandate experimental vaccines. And that's what we're talking about. There is nothing stronger than our own immune systems, and we don't need a vaccine to mimic that. I had COVID. It was no big deal. Nothing happened to me. I barely had a cold. And I have the antibodies. And it has been told to me by doctor that if I get the vaccine, that that could kill me because there's a lot of antibodies because of having COVID. And there is a nurse fighting for her life right now in Santa Barbara because she's full of blood clots from getting the vaccine after she had COVID. So the CDC, one and a half months ago, changed the requirement for hospitalizations. And if you get COVID and you are vaccinated, you are no longer counted as a COVID infection or a COVID death in the hospital. The vaccinated don't have to be registered as a COVID case, even if they're in the hospital and dying of COVID. And that's why people are saying the unvaccinated are filling the hospitals because the CDC changed the requirement, and the vaccinated are no longer counted in those numbers. So if you are vaccinated and you can get COVID, you can spread COVID. This is not an issue of vaccinated or unvaccinated. We should have a choice.
Our next five speakers are Colleen Wilson, Erin Wilson, Toni Fleniken, Allison McNamee, Janine Dorn. And I will start with Colleen Wilson. And Ms. Wilson is not online, so I will look back to her. I will go to our next speaker, which is Erin Wilson.
There you go.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Erin Wilson. I'm the mother of a 10-year-old student attending a Santa Barbara School District Elementary School. I first wanted to thank board members Capson Ford for their op-ed in The Independent calling for full board action on the proposed resolution. I'm in adamant support of this proposal. My son was born 1 pound, 11 ounces at Cottage Hospital in 2011. Due to his many months in the hospital on and off ventilators, he has had viral-induced asthma and is immunocompromised. We have been in the emergency room more times than I can count due to breathing complications from infections as simple as a cold. So, as you can imagine, he is deemed at high risk of severe complications from COVID-19. He was to say this past year and a half has been a fearful one for us. I witnessed my son on a ventilator, and I know what a stay in the ICU with your child looks like. It is imperative that we protect the vulnerable, not only in our school community, but in our wider community as well. We know that the Delta variant is surging in our county. We know that children's lifesaving vaccines will not be available until later this year. We know that more and more children are becoming infected with COVID-19 due to their ineligibility for vaccination. We know that unvaccinated children can transmit the highly infectious COVID-19. And we know that current vaccines available to those over 12 are safe, effective, and significantly lower transmission. It is your responsibility as the board to do everything in your power to provide an educational environment that minimizes risk and prevents spread. It is also the responsibility to our community at large to do everything we can to reduce transmission. I urge you to vote in favor of the proposed action. Implementation of this policy will no doubt save lives and reduce suffering in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison McNamee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. You know, I tried to prepare something, set up for these two minutes I have. But I just want to say, I'm a parent of a 16-year-old who's a junior in high school, but I also have three nieces who are very young, 7'5" and under one year. I am completely against this violation of our constitutional rights, but not just because of that, you know, the violation of the rights and informed consent. You know, I may not be a doctor, but I still have the ability to do research. And our research in my family show that this is not in our best interest. If the school board decides to put this these damaging mentally, mental health-wise, and as well as physical unconstitutional mandates to implement these toxic chemicals into our body, we will have no choice but to withdraw from the school system. We're a multi-generational Santa Barbara family, and this is disappointing. I am so emotionally distraught about what's going on. And the narrative that's being spoken to us through these channels is wrong. It is harmful, and we will not subject ourselves to our bodies to these chemicals that are shown through the reporting system to cause severe effects, up to including death, much more threatening to life than the virus itself, which is a bad flu. I understand the severity of impact of the condition itself, but we have treatments that are effective that have not been passed because the pharmaceutical companies decided they would like to make money off of this instead of considering our health. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. I have three speakers that are not online, so I will loop back to them. One, Colleen Wilson, Toni Fleniken, and Janine Dorn. So I will name the next five speakers. Marisol Gutierrez, Robbie Fisher, Rose Fittickin, and Paul Fittickin, Jamie Davin. I will start with Marisol Gutierrez.
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Hello. Thank you for your time today to hear us concerned parents and Santa Barbara natives. I'm going to start by quoting Dr. Maria Van Kerkhove from the WHO. "From the data we have, it still seems to be rare that an asymptomatic person actually transmits onward to a secondary individual", end quote. So I will ask you, why are you pressing so hard to test every child and adult who is not visibly showing any symptoms? This is very concerning, not only because clearly the data and science is telling us that the need for testing healthy individuals is obsolete, but also because on April 23rd, 2021, a NOVA medical group sent all affected device users an urgent medical device recall letter. The letter provided the following information: Do not use these tests to screen for or diagnose COVID-19. The reason for the recall of a NOVA medical group's SARS-CoV-2 antigen rapid test was due to test performance claims that did not accurately reflect the performance estimates observed during the clinical studies of the tests. The characteristics of the test have not been adequately established presenting a risk of false results", and that's straight from the FDA's website, by the way. "And the CDC is now withdrawing the request from the FDA for the EUA of the CDC's 2019 COV real-time PCR diagnostic panel. This is due to the fact that their tests cannot adequately detect the differentiation of SARS-CoV-2 and the influenza viruses." So with all that information, straight from the FDA and CDC, why are we continuing to trust these testing methods? And you expect us to trust And you expect us to trust you guys with our children? I'm sorry, but you need to wake up and realize you are going to be liable. You are liable. We know. We know what we're, we can do research. Okay, thank you. Make the right decision.
Our next speaker is Robbie Fisher.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Robbie Fisher. I'm an associate professor of biology at SBCC, and I'm the parent of a La Colina student. Despite all the crazy that you're hearing, you of course have the authority to mandate this vaccine, and I sincerely hope that you will. In meetings like this one at SBCC, you should know that the public comments were similar to what you're hearing today, and they often contained, like yours do are today, misinformation that was so egregious that they got our meeting recordings banned from YouTube for misinformation. That's the caliber of the comments you're hearing. And I also hope that you won't be swayed by claims like "freedom and my body, my choice", when those claims wouldn't withstand a moment's scrutiny if the topic were seatbelts, smoking in public, or airport security. There's no time in a public comment like this to enumerate all the reasons to support a vaccine mandate like this, but two things stand out to me as worthy of emphasis. First, the fact that breakthrough infections are more common with the Delta variant increases the urgency for vaccinations, which I think you all know, because those vaccinations prevent severe illness and death, and they limit transmission. Your mandate would protect not just your students and employees, but it would protect the whole community. And secondly, every person who becomes infected, whether or not they feel sick, is an important, sorry, is an opportunity, sorry, for future viral variants to evolve. It's what viruses do, and it's critically important. We got lucky with the Delta variant. It's more transmissible, but the disease it causes is probably not more severe. And crucially, we may not get that lucky with the next variant or the one after that. It's entirely possible we'll get maybe a tau variant with a 20% fatality rate or an omega variant against which our vaccines don't work at all. Every person who gets vaccinated increases the chances of those positive.
Thank you. Our couple of speakers are also not online, Rose and Paul Fittickin. So I'm going to go ahead and name five more speakers. Anastasia, sorry about that, one moment. Anastasia Stone, Kelly Clay, B. Sanders, Thomas Parker, Grace Wallace. And I will start with Anastasia Stone.
Hi, my name is Anastasia Stone. Thank you, board, for actively listening and taking into account the public's thoughts and concerns and questions. I truly appreciate your respect to all viewpoints. I have a few questions I hope you can address during your discussion time. First, why have an emergency meeting giving parents and the public little to no time to consider what you are proposing? Second, why was the weekly testing of all unvaccinated students, which seems to include the youngest students of the district, buried in an attachment that I had a hard time finding? Is this what you would consider transparent? I have a couple of special needs children, and they are young. And I personally have had a COVID test before. And if you're choosing to use the nasal swab, I cannot imagine them sitting still for that. They also have needs that need to be met with in-person services. So my next question is, how will you handle children who refuse to consent? Young children who may be uncomfortable with it, or older children who may use it as an excuse to not attend school? Are you aware that the nasal swab, I don't know which test you're choosing to use because you didn't state it, does contain harmful chemicals? Now, obviously, with all tests, when they're necessary, we do a risk-benefit analysis. But you're talking about frequent testing and exposure to chemicals. So we need to do a true risk-benefit analysis. I also wanted to know, are you aware that these tests are not 100% accurate? That means that you will have false positives, so children will not be at school. Staff may not be at school, all based on false positive.
I'm considering all of this. Thank you. And our next speaker, Kelly Clay Breimer, is not online, so I'm going to go with B. Sanders.
Hi. This has been a really tough year for everyone. And I'd like to commend you all for the hard work and difficult decisions you've been forced to make over the past 18 months. I have a third grader at Washington Elementary who spent all last year in remote learning. It was not especially fun or productive for him, but it felt like the right decision for our family. He needs to go back to school in person, but we are all justifiably worried about the COVID-19 virus situation. Unfortunately, it is clear that fully vaccinated people can still acquire this virus, harbor a substantial viral load, and pass it on to others. The Delta variant is as infectious as chickenpox and three times more so than the common cold. Having all district staff vaccinated goes some way to reduce the risks for all staff and students, and that is something we should embrace. It is unfortunate that this must be mandated in order to encourage the reluctant to get what is clearly a safe, effective, and soon-to-be-fully authorized vaccine. Over 165 million people in America are now fully vaccinated. Worldwide, over 4.3 billion doses have been given. We have had the most intense safety monitoring in U.S. history. The percentages of people who have had very serious or even fatal reactions are thousands of a percent. And yet, 100,000 new cases emerge each day, and deaths are climbing again. The vaccines are not killers. This virus absolutely is. Pediatric units in Louisiana are awful. Last week, 19% of Arkansas cases were under 18 years old and 10% under 12. Outbreaks are inevitable and will cause huge disruption in shut classes and even schools. People around the world are desperate for an opportunity to be vaccinated. We should be relishing that chance. We cannot perfectly protect our children, but surely we have a duty to try. So I absolutely support a vaccine mandate, rigorous testing, a mask mandate, and look forward to the day my son can be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Parker.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm the new volunteer chairman for Boy Scouts for Santa Barbara County, and I applaud your efforts with this resolution. In scouting, we're facing most of the same issues that you're trying to remedy with this action. Our scouting leaders are not required to be vaccinated, even though they are in regular close-up contact with our youth members, many of whom, if not most of them, attend schools within the Santa Barbara Unified District. The risk the unvaccinated pose to our community, to your schools, and to our children and their families is exceptionally palpable. In fact, it's unacceptable. But I'm not speaking to you in my scouting capacity today, but as a local resident of this city and this school district, I'm a polio survivor. I was affected with it back in the early 1950s when there were no vaccines yet available. Those were the days of the infamous iron lungs. Polio was most often a life sentence to be in a paraplegic, a quadriplegic, or living your life inside of an iron lung that helps you breathe, while facing the consequence of a very short lifespan. I had the strain of polio, which, had my case not been diagnosed in time, I would have spent the rest of my life in an iron lung instead of many months in hospital. I was lucky to have an innovative doctor, whose unique but safe medical techniques were criticized and rejected by many, though they had repeatedly been proven effective and were quickly and widely adopted during those pre-vaccine times. Her medical expertise and aggressive approach to treatment saved me from a terrible fate that many others did not survive because they refused to undergo that treatment or later on refused to be vaccinated. When the Salk vaccine came along and in time essentially eradicated this disease, it was too late for me. I wore a back brace for most of my childhood teen years and still have some mild, though non-limiting residual impacts from it. My son is an ER doctor who speaks frequently on the dangers of non-vaccination. I urge you to give your support and pass this resolution. It's extremely important.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Grace Wallace.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking today on behalf of our children and their safety, as well as on behalf of your staff, who has the right to either refuse the shot or to accept the shot. This shot hasn't been approved by the FDA. In fact, it's not even considered a vaccine because it doesn't fit five categories. One of those categories would be to prevent you from getting COVID again. And we obviously know that there's people who have had the vaccine or the shot, and they are now getting COVID. This is an experimental drug that can be fatal. And since you are putting pressure on your employees possibly to subjecting them to weekly testing, this is obviously against the normal cold. This is an experimental drug. Can you advise your staff that the COVID shot is safe with no toxin? When a vaccine normally reach five people die, or five fatalities, it's usually black box. Once it gets to 25, they usually remove it off the market. According to VAERS, V-A-E-R-S, we're already over 12,300 deaths, which we all know that VAERS only report 1% of the deaths, so you do the math. I am requesting a purified study, an isolation study, showing that the COVID virus, showing the COVID virus under a microscope, because currently now, there's no purified studies of COVID. And I ask the staff to do the research, do your work, do your study, because you ultimately have the authority to say yes or no to this, and you will be held accountable if you push this on people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Toni Flannigan.
Hi, my name is Toni Flannigan. I am the mom of four children, all within Santa Barbara Unified School District. And I just want to let you know that, first of all, I want to make a comment about the previous speaker talking about VAERS. VAERS is not a scientifically, it's not run by doctors, it's not run by anybody who has verifiable information. It is only run by people, the public, who decide to report things. But there is no way to verify that what is on there is actually true. So I just want to sort of get that off the table. I have, like I said, I have four children. Two of them are under 12. In January, my husband, who had to go to work every day and was masked and had an interaction for 15 minutes with another masked person in an open garage, brought the virus home because he didn't know that the other person had been exposed. I got it. One of my sons got it, but my other three children did not get it, luckily. I can tell you, as a COVID long-hauler, it was awful. I'm not talking about two weeks and I was okay. I'm talking about months and months where I would have days where I could not get out of bed. I was homeschooling two of my children, and it was an almost impossible situation for me. I don't understand. My children get vaccinated. Every year, there is a list of vaccinations that my children have to get to be able to attend public school.
Time. Thank you. Our next five speakers are Kelly, I'm sorry, Anne Thomas, Brian Campbell, Jill Rivera, Jessica Brown, and Brian Campbell. Adrienne Redland. I will start with Anne Thomas.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, dear members of the board, I have two children in the Santa Barbara School District. And I do not support the mandate for teachers. A local friend of mine is now in a wheelchair following her first Pfizer shot. This shot are not safe for all, and I respect the right of teachers to choose. And regarding the VAERS, the Vaccine Avert Event Reporting System, this is actually a tracking system that is used by the CDC and the ACIP branch of the CDC to figure out signals of injuries that are provoked by the vaccine. So it is used by the medical community. I am also very opposed to regular COVID testing of non-vaccinated students for the following reasons. One, the tests are not reliable. We now know that there are countless false positive tests that will inevitably result with children being taken out of class for days at a time when they are not sick, nor at risk of infecting others around them. Two, mental health issues are an all-time high among children. Adding the stress and trauma of a regular nasal testing to an already stressed-out student community will do more harm than good. This should be left up to their medical provider to decide if and when there is a need for such a test based on the symptoms they have. Three, focusing on the non-vaccinated will miss all the positive cases among the vaccinated students. The CDC confirmed that vaccinated people with breakthrough infections can transmit the virus to others around themselves. You're putting a policy in place that is not based on updated science. Four, if they've already contracted the virus and now have natural immunity from the virus, we do not need regular testing on a student or adult population that is at very limited risk of contracting the virus again. Five, late notice to parents. This resolution is being shared with parents with next-to-zero notice a mere few days before the school year is scheduled to start. Parents who do not agree with their kids being tested regularly are now left with little time to make alternate schooling plans for their children. The independent study program offered by the school district is no match for parents who want to have their kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote against the resolution.
Our next speaker is Brian Campbell.
Mr. Campbell, can you hear us? Oh, hi, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Sorry, phone technicalities. So per Santa Barbara Public Health, about 70% of Santa Barbara is vaccinated. The high-risk and those that are concerned have been vaccinated. They're protected, right? Question mark. So those who are not vaccinated have made that conscious decision to not get vaccinated for one reason or another. That's their choice, that's their decision. Again, the most important part is the most highly vulnerable people and those that are concerned are protected, and the unvaccinated people do not present a risk to anybody except for themselves. They do not present a risk. So I wish people would stop saying that. The real question is, why is the board mandating vaccine requirements when those that need the protection are protected? It's not based upon science, so who's benefiting from this draconian, boring measures being used by the board? If the board requires vaccines, they need to financially guarantee each person's safety. They need to put their money where the mouth is and back up the decisions that affect people's lives. Numerous court cases around the country and the world are finding no grounds on the part of public health for these mandates. Our own public health has stated they do not have any supporting documents to justify the mandates and requirements. Hence, they are illegal and unconscionable. Per the stats read at the beginning of this meeting, a person in Santa Barbara has less than a 1% chance, actually a 1/10th% chance, of dying from COVID. That's a very, very small number, according to statistics read at the beginning of this. Also is stated that vaccines are not FDA-approved. They are actually experimental drugs using a new technology, mRNA, not using traditional vaccine technology, which is why people are upset about it. And in fact, they are still in clinical trials until 2022, 2023. So again, they are not FDA-approved. So as we've seen, the mixed messaging and lack of science in the decision-making around here, one example is a national PCR test that was required and has been in use for over a year. It has been found to be defective. It cannot differentiate between the flu and COVID-19. The PCR test is one prime example of another lack of science being used and the decisions being.
Our next speaker is Jill Rivera. Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm in opposition to the resolution and my primary reason is is because we don't have enough data. This is an experimental vaccine as many of, it's a fact. It's released under the Emergency Use Authorization Act. It's not licensed nor approved by the FDA. And it's not a traditional type of vaccine. So what I mean by that is it does not inject a pathogen that your body creates antibodies to. That's how all the other vaccines operate. This is a new vaccine and typically seven to 10 years of testing before vaccines are released. This has not has had none of that time. We don't have long-term studies. And then the initial studies, children were not observed, neither were pregnant women. And I can tell you from personal, uh, personal experience, I know someone who used to work in the district who was fully vaccinated earlier this year and passed away two weeks ago from COVID. I also know of somebody in the administration of the Santa Barbara School District recently was came down with COVID and was fully vaccinated. In addition to that, I know some football players at Santa Barbara City College who came down with COVID. I believe one of them, I know for sure, was in fact fully vaccinated. So to me, that tells me that the the jury is still out on how effective these vaccines are. And before people put anything in their body that could cause harm or injury, I think they have the right to have safety studies and full data to enter into, you know, doing something with their eyes wide open. In addition, on July 21st, the CDC very quietly announced that the RT PCR tests that were used to let millions of Americans know they weren't infected with coronavirus or COVID, all along has been unable to differentiate between COVID and the flu. So the CDC announced they will revoke the emergency use authorization.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jessica Brown is not online, so I will come back to her. Our next speaker is Adrienne Redland.
Are you there?
Yes, can you, go ahead.
Yeah. I am opposed to the resolution, which includes mandatory testing for healthy schoolchildren and continued masking. In regards to unvaccinated children being regularly tested, first, there are no FDA-approved tests for COVID. All tests are only authorized under the Emergency Use Authorization. There have already been 268 COVID tests that have been pulled from being distributed under the FDA. Testing children without symptoms carries the risk of many false positives, which will keep healthy children from attending school. Only unvaccinated children will be required to do testing, and that does not take into account that people who are vaccinated still get and spread COVID. It has also been reported that vaccinated people carry a higher viral load, which leads to more spread. The unvaccinated can still get sick from the vaccinated. Testing healthy, unvaccinated children will not stop the spread. Moreover, any decisions for medical procedures should be happening between the patient and their medical provider on a case-by-case basis to determine if testing with a non-FDA-approved test is appropriate. I, as the parent, assert that if a child has no symptoms, they should be allowed to attend school without being tested. I assert all children, regardless of vaccination status, should stay home if they exhibit any sickness. These were the requirements when kids attended in-person learning back in March. Win in the purple tier. I would like, oh, I would also like to know where the funds for testing will come from. How much of the school instruction day will be allocated to this testing? What subjects will suffer? In regards to masking, I would like to see the double-blind study that shows masking is an effective way to limit transfer of COVID, being that the virus is 0.1 micron in size and masks only filter out 0.3 micron-sized particles. Every viral pathologist uses a closed air circulation system to stop this threat of a virus for a reason. Prior to COVID, I never saw my child's pediatrician use a mask when we went into a very small room to see if he had any some other virus. I will pull my children from the unified.
Our next five speakers are Sobin M., Ravi Konda, Hormina Wang, Shannon Chitkota, and Catherine P. And I will begin with Sobin.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I I heard all parents and I, all parents have valid points and I respect them. My decision is to support this decision because of the statistics ranging from March 2020 to now. Without vaccinations, we saw the numbers of 20 people per player from last year. And then with the increased rate of vaccination, we saw the numbers come down, right? We saw shops open, businesses open, people were able to go down, go down the streets a little more safer, but with masks. Apart from all this, seeing close relatives affected with this deadly disease, I think we have a civic duty to protect our community, especially our children going to school. So having said this, I I hear other parents, I respect their rights to choose, but more than rights right now, it's lives are at stake. So I hate the idea that my children have to go through testing every day at school because they don't have the opportunity to get vaccinated or we don't have a vaccination yet for those small children. But for the sake of the kids, I think these adults need to get vaccinated and curb this disease. That's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Chitkota.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You can, you may begin. One moment. Okay.
Okay, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. So my name is Sharon Yagotka and I'm the mother of two boys which attended Roosevelt School. And we pulled both our sons from school due to the lack of education they were receiving over the years and also because of the absence of in-person instruction. They both attended private schools. My oldest son will be a freshman at Dos Pueblos High School. And my husband and I are both extremely opposed to our children being subjected to weekly COVID testing. This is absolutely absurd. Do you have any idea the anxiety that you are causing our children? They are scared that they might receive a false pos, a false positive test for COVID and be sent home. And not to mention, many senior and accomplished teachers have indicated they would resign if this policy were implemented. This will further, uh, this will further societal division. This will further societal division and discriminating, which will likely prompt litigation. And not to mention the stigma for the children and their families. And next time, please schedule for future meetings at a more convenient time instead of 2 o'clock in the afternoon when parents, caregivers, and guardians can't attend when they're not working. This is just, this has me extremely upset as a parent. And if this happens to my boys, I will be marching into that school and I will pull my my son from the public school. We already pulled both of our sons and I will pull my other son from public school again because this, this is wrong. This is absolutely wrong. It's against our beliefs. It's against our constitutional rights. And this should not be done to our children. It they should, we should be focusing on their education, period. Thank you.
Thank you. I will name the next five speakers. Cheryl Trosky, Travanti Veldurthy, Rebecca Spears, Tanya Jacob, Jennifer Loussa. And I will begin with Cheryl Trosky. The speaker is not online, so I will go with Travanti Veldurthy. The speaker is also not online. Our next speaker is Rebecca Spears. Speaker is also not online. Our next speaker is Tanya Jacob. Tanya is also not online. The next speaker is Jennifer Loussa. Ms. Loussa, can you hear us?
Me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you for your time. My name is Jennifer Loussa, and I strongly oppose weekly COVID testing protocols and vaccine requirements for students in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. It is my understanding that as elected board members, you are to have our children's best interests at heart. Clearly, I have been proven wrong. There is much evidence that children and young adults are at little to no risk of contracting this virus. So why the sudden push of an experimental vaccine or mandatory weekly testing? Haven't our children gone through enough? It seems to me that the well-being and accessibility to the public school system has now taken a backseat to the greater agenda and narrative that is being pushed. We are at a crossroads. It is now up to us as parents and concerned residents of Santa Barbara to unite, stand up, and fight for the rights of the safety of our children and young adults. If our elected board members will not, who will? Thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. Checking back on speakers to see if they've come back online. They haven't, so I will name the next five speakers. Larry Bigford, Ravi Konda, Gail Fairburn, Lisa Ostendorf, and Petra Thorn. I will begin with Larry Bigford.
Okay. I sent an email out to you folks this morning, which basically supports what you're doing, which I think is really excellent. There are a few minor places where the protocols are not quite all there. There needs to be some, perhaps there needs to be some modifications. But where it is at the moment is a fine starting point. I was just trying to bring your attention to a few items that would make it even better. And I really appreciate what you're trying to do for our children. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gail Fairburn.
Thank you. My name is Gail Fairburn. Thank you for proposing this resolution. I urge all members of the school board to pass it. Our children and grandchildren, our neighbors' children who cannot yet be vaccinated deserve a safe place to learn. Teachers and staff deserve a safe place to help them learn. The community deserves to know that an ordinary school day will not become a super-spreader event. The COVID Delta variant presents a serious threat with increased communicability. A serious response is needed in all parts of our community and the schools are an important part of that response. I hope the board, along with requiring vaccinations or weekly tests for all employees, will also continue safe masking, distancing, and disinfection protocols according to the best CDC advice available. The vaccine is safe and effective. It is approved by the CDC. It is not experimental. But resistance to the vaccine, testing, and safety protocols in the name of personal freedom or based on misinformation continues to put us all at risk. Every additional case of COVID is an opportunity for the virus to produce a mutation that may be more serious medically or can perhaps render the vaccines useless, placing us back to where we were last year with the accompanying horrors of mounting deaths and the overwhelm of medical resources. When COVID co-ops medical resources, those with medical needs other than COVID are at risk also. But for those who still do not wish to be vaccinated, they are not being forced. They can still choose to do their part in protecting the students, their coworkers, and the community, especially those most vulnerable medically, by cooperating with weekly testing and other proven and effective safety protocols. I have faith that the board and the administrative staff in implementation will follow the best science and will respect student needs.
I'm.
Pass the resolution.
I'm, thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Ostendorf. Lisa Ostendorf, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I am very alarmed and concerned about the masking, testing, and vaccination mandates being considered for the coming school year. It is well-accepted that children have statistically zero chance of dying from this virus. The CDC itself shows the K to 12 mortality rate from or with COVID at 0.00003%. Any intervention must cause fewer harms to the recipients than the infection. Since children have the lowest death rate from COVID, administering an experimental vaccine with many serious safety issues is especially unjustifiable and is clearly irrational. Given these facts, an unfounded theory has emerged that claims if children are vaccinated, it would stop transmission of the virus to teachers and staff. First, we know that contrary to popular opinion, asymptomatic transmission does not happen. The data shows that students are not asymptomatic carriers, that they and teachers have far lower rates of COVID diagnosis than the general population. Many studies, even by the CDC, and one from Wuhan, China, with 10 million residents, demonstrated asymptomatic transmission was nonexistent. Secondly, we know that the vaccine does not prevent person-to-person transmission. Dr. Anthony Fauci himself stated last October that the goal of the vaccine was to provide personal protection only, not to prevent death or person-to-person transmission. Finally, it is illegal to force or mandate any experimental emergency use medical treatment on anyone. And if your child has an adverse reaction now or in the future to one of these treatments, the manufacturer is not liable. The parents will therefore flood the school district with lawsuits as they will demand someone be held accountable. Please see the VAERS reporting system to see how many deaths and injuries have already occurred from these vaccines. Please save the children and just say no.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Petra Thorn.
Hi, this is Petra. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. To my belief, I feel that board is ignoring the overwhelming scientific evidence pointed out by doctors that do not follow political narrative and are being censored. Doctors all over the world warns of taking the COVID-19 vaccine. Pharma industry has permission to skip the animal trials. It means the people are the trial and our children we care very much for. COVID vaccine has not been proven safe and effective. It is a new technology that has not been tested, that has been tested on few thousands of people in few months. It is still experimental vaccine with limited short-term data and manufacturers are exempt from liability. I do not wish to have that used on my children. I do not want my children to be part of the trial, and I believe we still do have some rights to it. So I am opposing the testing and I'm opposing mandatory COVID vaccine. Other parts that, you know, people presented are compelling. And if they are willing to take it and they want to, I believe everybody has a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Janine Dorn.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks for listening to input about our children. I was a substitute teacher in the Glade Union School District for some years just because really I love kids and so I'm compelled to speak out on their behalf and I I'm against this resolution for testing and mandated vaccines. Children have a one-in-a-million chance of dying of COVID. And when they do get it, it's a very light case and they get over it quickly. I have a little after-school club where one of the children got it and it was basically that she had the sniffles for a few days. This vaccine is not a true vaccine, but rather gene therapy. It doesn't contain any amount of inoculant, but rather tells your genes to start producing spike proteins. These spike proteins are very damaging to the body's tissues and attack 28 out of 50 body tissues in vitro tests. How long do the spike proteins hang around? We don't know because we have not studied them for very long. The true study shows that if a vaccine is safe and efficacious, it takes 10 years minimum to find that out. More people have died in six months from this vaccine than all the other vaccines given altogether. altogether in the last 20 years. When the rotavirus vaccine came out, it was stopped and taken off market after only 53 deaths, but right now, according to our government statistics, on the VAERS reporting system site, the number of deaths is over 12,000. And according to a Harvard study, the VAERS system is believed to capture only 1% of the actual deaths due to the fact that the reporting system is difficult and lengthy for doctors to use, as well as the fact that many doctors don't think vaccines cause death and injury since that's what the pharmaceutical companies tell them, so they don't make the connection. I know of quite a few people personally who have become injured for life. One is permanently paralyzed from the neck down. My daughter-in-law had a fellow student die in high school from the Gardasil shot. People are knowledgeable about this subject from personal experience. My doctor says he has a patient who died right after taking the vaccine, COVID vaccine, and another who has a huge swollen body with testicles the size of cantaloupe. Many young people who were in perfect health have become permanently disabled as a result of taking the COVID vaccine. These stories are not in the news because they don't sell vaccine. The truth has been greatly censored. Please vote against this resolution. Thank you so much.
Our three last speakers are Dr. Amy Smith, Lisa Sloan, and Joyce Adriensen. I will begin with Amy Smith.
Moment. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I have a PhD in material science from MIT, and I did my undergrad at Caltech, and I have worked in a quality control department, so I'm very concerned about good science, good data. And I'm also very concerned about the corruption of science. And when huge, powerful, multi-billion-dollar, liability-protected industries capture not only regulatory bodies but also science, then we are in big trouble. And we have to make sure that we're having objective science. And I worked in material science, which isn't biology, but I did work around a lot of the discussion about nanotechnology because that was the big buzz thing at the time, and I'm sure it's still very popular when I was studying. And I also was working on the issue and understanding about genetic engineering of our food supply, which was being done for corporate interests, for corporate monopoly interests, and was proliferated without our consent, was proliferated through regulatory capture, not through a big democratic discussion where the public was able to be informed and talk about the ethical implications. And now we have another technology right now with the mRNA vaccine and the genetically engineered adenovirus vaccine, which is the Johnson &amp; Johnson type shot. These are gene therapies. This is a new technology, a novel technology platform, they call it. Where was the discussion? Where is the discussion about the ethics? Where is the discussion about the unknowns, the risks? You know, with the genetic engineering of the food supply, there was no testing on environmental impact, on impact to human health, and it was just put through. It was called substantial equivalence. Please look that up. That said that a genetically engineered corn was identical to a regular conventional organic corn, and that was just by the stroke of a pen, not through any proof. And now we're doing the same thing. We're using something and they're calling it a vaccine and evoking our emotional attachments to the good things about past vaccines to snow the public. So please, please do not impose this experiment on anyone.
Our next speaker is Lisa Sloan. Lisa Sloan, can you unmute yourself, please?
Okay, there you go. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Lisa Sloan, a resident of Galita, and I agree with Dr. Amy Smith, our previous speaker, and urge you, please vote no on the resolution before you today. Steve McCann, a columnist with The American Thinker, on August 4, 2021, wrote that a "one-size-fits-all" vaccine, particularly one that was approved on an emergency basis with unknown short- and long-term side effects, requires allowing citizenry to evaluate the risks for themselves. Nearly 30,000 out of 100,000 of those that contracted smallpox died of smallpox, and yet, according to CDC, less than 110 out of 100,000 of those who contracted COVID-19 died of COVID-19. As further validation that the COVID vaccines were approved with little or no assessment of short or long-term effects, this past May, Professor Luc Montagnier, a French virologist and Nobel Prize winner, predicted a potential outcome of mass vaccinations. He said, "Mass vaccinations are a scientific error as well as a medical error. It is an unacceptable mistake. The history books will show that because it is the vaccination that is creating the variants, there are antibodies created by vaccines forcing the virus to find another solution or die, such as the Delta variant." Meanwhile, this board has not provided information on a single case of a teacher or school member contracting COVID-19 from any student. Please do not take from parents their right to choose whether or not to vaccinate their children, and do not force students to be testing with a test that has been shown to be inaccurate, nonspecific, and therefore unreliable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Joyce Adriensen.
Hello. I am Joyce Adriensen, the new president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Earlier in the week, I met with Superintendent Maldonado and John Beckio of Human Resources. I told them at that time that since it is summer and difficult to confer with the union membership, that I can neither endorse nor oppose the current proposal at this time. Members of the union, however, I am sure, share your goal of keeping the safety of both staff and students paramount. And I want to thank you sincerely for your continued attention to this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo, for managing the public comments today, and very nice to meet you, Ms. Adriensen, and we look forward to working with you this coming year. Again, I want to say that I greatly appreciate the speakers during public comments and also the 250 or so of you who are attending this meeting remotely. Board members, it's now your turn to share your questions and comments. I hope that we will all, speaking for myself also, resist the temptation to get into the weeds of wordsmithing and implementation and stay focused on the resolution statements, which will help Dr. Maldonado and her staff go forth with creating a fair, reasonable, and thoughtful plan. With that, I'll open it up for comments. Ms. Capps?
Thank you so much, President Ford, and to our speakers and to the many that have emailed us. I just wanted to provide a bit of context to the resolution as an author of it regarding the timeframe. And a question that was rightly raised, why today, an emergency meeting, 2:00 in the afternoon? Well, it's because of the urgency of the vaccine and the fact that we're starting school in two weeks. And I learned as of last week that only 63% of our staff have self-reported, which doesn't mean that it's accurate, that they've been vaccinated. That number, in my view, is far from where it should be, and I felt a tremendous amount of urgency to give our staff as much time as we can while providing safety to get that vaccine. Some speakers have raised their right. So the bulk of this resolution is about that immunization requirement for staff, for grown-ups, for adults, nothing about children and vaccines. And if they choose not to get a vaccine, then it's testing. So it is not a mandate. You don't lose your job. You can choose testing. So the bulk of the resolution is about the vaccination. But also included, as has been rightly pointed out by parents, there is direction about testing of students. That, in my mind, there's less time urgency to, and this is specifically a directional resolution, which is the role of the board. It's up to the staff, under Dr. Maldonado's direction, to implement this. And certainly, we want to make sure that parents are fully informed with enough advance notice about how testing of children will be implemented. So I just provide that context, that this is not the details of how all of this will work, as much as those details are extremely important to staff, teachers, and families. This is the direction of the board, and I wanted to provide that context. Hopefully, that provides some reassurance to parents, especially parents who are wondering about testing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Ford, thank you, Ms. Capps, for getting the ball rolling on this. Really appreciate your leadership in doing this. Thank you so much. I know this is so important to all of us, so thank you. A little bit of clarification on the resolution. The cover page on the background, it mentions that the resolution will also require unvaccinated staff to obtain vaccinations prior to the start of the school year. And as Ms. Capps mentioned, the resolution, the headline of the resolution, the takeaway for me is that it's either/or. If you're vaccinated, you will show proof that you've done that. If you are not vaccinated, then you will undergo weekly testing. So there seems to be a little bit of disconnect here. Is it either, do I have to go and get vaccinated before I start my job on August 18th? Or do I have the choice of being tested? And that's a question that has been brought up by, as you saw in a couple of emails, and also by some employees that reached out to me personally. So I want to clarify that the resolution is stating it's one or the other, that it's not an absolute mandate that you have to do just the one thing. Am I reading that correctly?
Well, let's look. Number two actually does state that, beginning with fall semester, we want everyone to be vaccinated or participate in COVID screening, testing. And then number three said they're required to provide proof of the vaccination or of testing. And then it does say they should obtain vaccinations prior to the start of the school year. So, Ms. Alvarez, are you maybe suggesting that that last sentence, say, unvaccinated staff are strongly encouraged to receive their vaccination?
Yes, I know our goal is not towards this today. However, I do believe that requires further clarification. Where it says unvaccinated staff should obtain vaccinations prior to the start of the school year, I would suggest that we say unvaccinated staff are encouraged to start the immunization process before the beginning of school. This gives us 12 days. Vaccinations are so easily to obtain now. Maybe we can even put on our website, Mr. Rouse, where to go get vaccines, where somebody who's interested can say, oh, I can go to CVS, and they can start that process. So that's my suggestion, that it clarifies that it's one or the other.
Ms. Capps?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for raising that. Absolutely, it's a choice, and we should clarify that loudly here. If you choose not to be vaccinated and you're a staff member of Santa Barbara Unified, you will be tested at least weekly. This is what municipalities are doing, state governments are doing, companies are doing, other educational institutions are doing at this point. And you're exactly right, the vaccines are readily available. We have held vaccine clinics on school sites all throughout the summer and in the spring, and we will do everything we can to continue to provide that kind of access. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And also, I just want to share a little bit more of information for the public that it's logged on and for those of you who will be watching this later. I've done some research as well, as far as what other school districts are doing across the state, and the school districts are doing something similar to what we are doing. We all care very much about the safety of our students, of our staff. We're a community. It is our responsibility to do our part as individuals and as a group as well. Before the meeting, I just read that Marin County, the Marin School District up north, is actually not only requiring proof of vaccines from staff, but also from students, and they are going to publish those results per school. I'm not suggesting we do that ourselves. Please be clear, I'm not suggesting that. What I'm saying is that this is something, as it was mentioned before, that is urgent and that is most important to all of us, and that we all share in that responsibility to take care of one another. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, thank you. And thank you also for bringing this resolution forward and for Ms. Capps and President Ford, and for having public comment and encouraging, you know, in receiving the feedback from our families and from our staff and such. One of my questions is also along the lines of Ms. Alvarez. In terms of, you know, asking for clarification, I also had a question from a teacher who's currently traveling with his family and asked if he needs to have the vaccination prior to the school year in order to return to work. And I could understand, you know, first of all, we want our children, our students, to be kept safe. You know, we want them not to face the risk of COVID and to protect them as much as possible, I think, as a bottom line. And I think that this is, you know, can be more cleared. For example, you know, I could understand how a teacher who's in the middle of traveling, yes, he can probably get a vaccination where he is, right? But it has sides of side effects. And so, you know, is he able to, for example, I think clarity is helpful, you know? Can he come back, be tested weekly, and then begin to have his vaccinations when he is home, in the comfort of his home and near his own doctor and such? So I think that clarity on that is helpful. And then also, I wanted to know about, you know, funding. We do have the budget that was approved at the last meeting and so forth, and I also want to be sure to know, you know, to have knowledge of how this will impact our budget. You know, do we have support from the government in terms of funding for both for testing of staff and students, wherein the parents are, you know, giving consent? How will that impact our budget and our school?
Dr. Maldonado?
Yes, thank you for that question. Ms. Kim Hernandez, who's here with us on Zoom, will speak to the question of budget availability. Ms. Hernandez, are you there?
I am here. Let me see if I can get my video to go. There we go. Yes, I'm here. So, yes, this is something that we would be able to use our SubRadar SIR funds for. We have lots of masks that are still available. We have over 314,000 masks that are sitting in our armory right now that would be available for our school sites. And so, you know, we fully intend to make sure that we have everything that everyone needs for this.
To clarify, at no cost to the staff members or the students, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the other question and concerns I have is that, you know, this is regarding, the resolution is regarding primarily staff, Santa Barbara Unified School District staff. And then, you know, the clarity with, not the clarity, but my concern is how, you know, and how it would impact our students in terms of the students needing to be tested and, you know, students 12 and over and so forth. And so, for that, I would also want to know more about, you know, as the parents have expressed, you know, the intrusiveness of the testing and so forth, and how that's going to be done. The testing protocol, from what I understand, it would be age-appropriate as indicated by our collaboration with Santa Barbara Public Health. Is that correct?
That is correct. And as you know, last year, that is correct. We will follow the guidance from Public Health around testing and are currently in the process of writing, as you know, from our last meetings, report by Dr. Wagenek. There were different ways that we need to test depending on conditions, and we will be writing those protocols after this meeting if the resolution passes, but it'll all be in accordance with Public Health guidance.
Okay. Thank you so much, Superintendent. You know, that really is helpful and something that we can address, you know, with those that are asking us and those have expressed concerns, either an email or in public comment. I believe that... I believe that, yes, and just, you know, just as a personal note, I know that so many have expressed concerns about having someone with an autoimmune disease in their family or an elderly parent and such, multigenerational household. I know myself, you know, I have an autoimmune disorder, and as I received a vaccination. I'm also the caregiver to my mother, who's 84. And just the, the seriousness and our concern is not to take away from folks' rights, it's just this is a public health crisis. And that is why we're holding this meeting for, regarding our students and regarding the safety of our staff, because we care about, about our students and our staff and, and our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr.?
President Ford? If I could just comment on the budget question?
Of course.
Board Member Munoz, thank you for the question. I do want to make it clear, though, to the board that, that testing for schools is still being paid for by the state. So there is not a charge to the school district for any of the testing.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, do you have any comments today?
I guess, yeah, I had a question.
Please.
First of all, thank you guys for starting this resolution, Ms. Capps and Ms. Ford. We mentioned vaccinated a lot in the resolution, and does this mean two weeks after the second vaccination? Or with someone with one shot, would they be considered vaccinated? I don't know who that's addressed to, but...
They, it depends on which brand of vaccine the employee or staff member gets. Obviously, the Moderna and Pfizer are two shots, and you're not considered vaccinated until two weeks after the second shot. With Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's two weeks after the only shot.
Thank you.
Ms. Capps?
Mr. Kelly raised a great point, another detail, which is very important. So essentially, it's just to reiterate, it's proof of vaccination card or weekly testing. So if you're waiting, you're in the process, that means that you'll be tested until you receive your vaccination card. And again, it's up to the staff to undertake the logistics of that kind of verification. And I don't minimize the challenge that that's provided. But thankfully, there are examples of how other, again, other companies like Lyft and Disney and other municipalities like LA, other school districts are doing this. So I would hope that we can borrow from where it's working already and be as efficient as possible. But again, thanks for that clarification, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I would also like to say, I, I'm a firm believer of our personal freedoms and the importance of choice. And especially in this resolution, we aren't mandating a vaccination. It is optional, and there's choices that you have instead of not getting vaccinated. So I think that's a key part of this. And I'll do a, I will make sure that students are made aware of that, the choice. I think that's a really important part. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And Ms. Simms-Moten?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Capps and Ms. Ford, for bringing, bringing this forth. And certainly, thank you for all the input from the parents and concerns. And again, to the many folks who are on this call as well. You know, this is distressing for all of us, particularly us leaders, having to make those decisions for the care and well-being of everyone. But I appreciate this resolution, that we're taking that into consideration by offering a choice of being able to do that. But also, it just really states about we, we were making decisions for the care and well-being of everyone. And I also think, you know, pre-COVID, when this hit us, we were not prepared for it, but there's a lot, many things that we didn't do. But now, in the, in, in the post, if you will, of, of the aftermath of the initial COVID, we are better prepared to, to meet these challenges, this challenge as it's coming forth. And, and it's important that we all do our part now, that we know a little bit better, and we can really be more effective in the part that we can play, the fact that we do now have vaccines available, you know, to our children 12, 12 and up, to our staff and to everyone that have that choice, to be a part of making sure that our, our entire community is safe. And so I really think of this as, you know, our accountability and our responsibility as, as leaders. And really, what we're doing here with this resolution, again, appreciative to the authors who brought it forward, is our due diligence to ensure that we're doing, ensure the health and safety of, you know, all of our students, which is our, our main responsibility. So, so thank you with regards to that. And I echo the comments and questions that have come from other board members. I will say sister and brother board member now, so with regards to that. But I did have a clarification just on the, on our young, our youngest students. I know that we were talking about, I think it's in number five, and I don't want to wordsmith here, but I just want to bring up a question about our unvaccinated students. So I get that, those who can have it, but I, I just want to be real clear, it's not those who even can't have the vaccination. It may just be a minor detail, because you're under 12, you can't have the vaccination. So we wouldn't, so would we be testing them that's under 12, even because they can't have, you know, vaccination? So I just want to get, because those are some questions that came to me, and I just want to put that forward.
Ms. Simms-Moten, yes, we are addressing all students K through 12. And so I would consider it up to district staff and Dr. Maldonado to come up with a really good plan for our youngest students. Do you want to say anything else, Dr. Maldonado? That's it? Cool.
Okay. So that was my question mainly on that. And I think the clarification, again, on two and three, was just a little confusion. But I think in, I, I'm not sure which member asked that question, but I'm, I'm sure that language will be tightened up with regards to that. So again, I do, you know, this is a health emergency, and we need to act, and we know that we can act even in a more proactive way than we were able to do previous to this. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I do have a couple of comments. First of all, a little walk down memory lane. There was a time about seven months ago when the entire country was eagerly and desperately awaiting the vaccination. And now, through Cottage Hospital alone, over 99,000 people here have been vaccinated. And I believe really strongly that it's effective and unfortunate that just not enough people, eligible people, we're talking about eligible people, got the vaccination. And now, our future, our children are more at risk than ever with the Delta variant. So as much as I understand the concerns that have been raised, hypotheticals are nearly impossible to address, but I have every confidence that the district staff will act and create a plan that addresses protocols, timelines, exceptions, and refusal. I do not see this as coercion. I see it as a bold effort to do our part as a school district to mitigate the damage of COVID-19 and over 600,000 deaths in this country alone and the dangerous Delta variant. I wish I had a magic wand, but I don't, and so I support this resolution. With that, are there any further comments? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes. As I read this resolution, there's four points that are takeaway for me as I walk out of this room. And with the assumption that it will be approved, I, I think it will be a very, a very happy day, a very hopeful day, where we might encourage, I hope we encourage people to go out there and make the decision to be vaccinated, if that's what they decide to do, which is what we believe to be the best, according to this resolution. But the four takeaways that I see from this resolution is, number one, an employee will show proof of being vaccinated or test weekly. Number two, students will go on a regular, will be tested on a regular basis, the process to be determined by Superintendent and, and her team. Then three is Superintendent Maldonado to keep working in partnership with local authorities. And number four, the use of face coverings, which is in line with Santa Barbara Public Health. So those are the four key takeaways for me for this resolution. And just one more thing I want to ask Dr. Beckio. If an employee has a situation where the employee is not able, for whatever circumstances, to be able to get, to comply with these regulations, what, what options are there for this employee?
Thank you for that question. As you know, the, the way the resolution is written, with the either vaccination or testing, there really is not a need for exemption on the vaccination. But if there is a request for exemption, then that would go through what we call the interactive process. And we would, through HR, meet with the employee, and we would try to determine reasonable accommodations. And those are always made on a case-by-case basis, depending on the employee, the position, where they work, what their job duties are, et cetera. So we would have to walk through that process with an employee that was putting in for an exemption. In this case, it would be from vaccination and testing, because in essence, your testing is the accommodation for anyone that doesn't want to vaccinate. So if it would have to be both those looking for an exemption, then we'd have to walk through the process with that person.
Thank you. And so with that, Ms. Capps?
Yes, with that, I would like to make the motion to approve this resolution with two changes. And please correct me if I haven't accurately surmised our discussion, but they would be, change number one would be in the third action to add at the end, or submit to testing at least weekly, as a phrase or a new sentence. And the second change, per Ms. Simms-Moten's excellent clarification question, deleting the word "unvaccinated" students, so that it's students will be regularly tested. Is that accurate?
In number five?
I'm sorry, yes, in number five, point five.
Yes.
Great.
Can you repeat the first one one more time?
Yes, so in point three, I'll put my glasses back on. It would read, "All Santa Barbara Unified Staff are required to provide proof of vaccination or undergo testing a minimum of once a week to show that they are not infected by COVID-19." And just again, to make this even more clear, it says, "Unvaccinated staff should obtain vaccinations prior to the start of the school year, August 17th, 2021, or submit to testing at least weekly." I hope that that clarifies
Thank you. Yes.
The situations that have been raised, if someone is in process of vaccination, if someone is on vacation, up until the start of school, what, what that person might be facing, the reality that they may be facing. Hopefully, that clarification works for everybody?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to make the motion and just speak to it a bit more broadly, because really, this is about the health and safety of students. And that is the oath that I took in 2016, when I joined this board. That is the first paramount responsibility amongst many other responsibilities that we have as school board members. And during this pandemic, the last 17 months, 17, our students here in Santa Barbara and across the country have bore the brunt of this pandemic. They are the ones who have suffered, in my view, the most with a lot, loss of learning. And they're the ones that we need to put front and center as they go back into our classrooms on August 17th. This is also about the health and safety of all staff. I have such respect for the 2,000 or so employees in this district who choose to have jobs and careers where they are helping children. They choose that. But that is their choice, and they are going to, in the next several days, be around thousands of unvaccinated kids who cannot get a vaccine, whose parents, speaking from experience, might want that vaccine. And so these are employees that are choosing this job to be interacting with children, who currently, many of whom can't access the vaccines that so many of us are now enjoying. This is also about the vaccines themselves and the safe and incredibly effective results that we are seeing, not just here in our community, but around the globe. Four billion people have received these shots. They are proving to be extremely effective, even as was brought up by a speaker, even in the face of a new variant, they still keep us from being hospitalized. Right now, in Santa Barbara County, there are roughly 35 people in the hospital. 90% of those people are unvaccinated. It is still true that this is a pandemic of, again, vaccinated. And so what we're doing with this action is not just about minimizing COVID or mitigating it. We've been doing that for 17 months. It's time to prevent COVID. Prevention is what we're talking about, and the vaccine is the way to do that. And we know we can do it. We have history. Thank you so much to Tom Parker, a polio survivor, for speaking, because polio was the most feared virus just a few decades ago, with tens of thousands of people every year becoming paralyzed because of this disease. Now, not one case of polio. Why? Not because of herd immunity. No, it's because of the vaccine and a massive program like we're seeing across this country, and we're trying to do here locally. And again, this is about our students and our teachers, all of them, coming back to school. And I believe that they deserve to be in their classrooms together, to be learning, to be doing what children need to be doing, with staff and teachers who love the fact that they get to interact with children every day and be free from this disease. We've been doing this long enough, 17 months of all of the precautions, and our children have been doing their part. I believe, as an elected leader, it is now yet again timed for our, us to do our part. And taking this action, I believe, will save lives and will actually allow us to beat back this disease once and for all. And with that, I move to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second for this resolution with the two edits? Ms. Alvarez?
I second this resolution. And I also ask Dr. Maldonado if you will provide us with updated data of how many employees are vaccinated. I know that the data we have is for 2021 because of summer break, obviously. But perhaps as early as you see that is fit to give us that updated information once school starts, or it's your judgment, but I'd like to see that data, please be brought to us.
Yes, we will bring data to our board minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. This motion has been made and seconded. So now, board members, I'd like to know, all in favor, please signify by raising hand and saying loudly, "Aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. This resolution passes unanimously. And now, the work begins to implement it. Thank you in advance from the board to all district staff and Dr. Maldonado for the effort and time that we know it's going to take, in addition to the hard work you're doing to open school on August 17th. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 10th, at 5:30 PM. Please note the new time. Closed session will begin at 4:30 PM. And due to the current state of the COVID-19 pandemic, the board will meet in person and the public will participate remotely. I will close this meeting with a reference I heard today, that we are now entering our sophomore year of COVID-19, rather than a one-and-done, sadly. And at this time of year, when we all expected to be focused on learning acceleration, equity, and literacy, we, as well as all educational publications, groups, and districts, are instead nearly 100% focused on addressing the Delta variant and the alarming rates of infection. Friends and foes, please know that we are doing our best, and we want to start school on August 17th safely for staff and students. So we go forth. This special meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board is adjourned. See you next Tuesday.